Welcome to the council ordinary meeting. The time is now nine AM and I now declare this meeting open. Mount Isa City Council would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet, the Kalkadoons, and pay respects to elders past, present and emerging. And I'd also like to pass on that respect to any Australian First Nation people that are in attendance today. Please note that this meeting, this ordinary meeting of Mount Isa City Council, may be livestreamed and recorded in accordance with the council's recording of council meetings policy. As a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded. By remaining in chambers, it is assumed your consent is given if your image is inadvertently broadcast. I'd like to now start and invite Pastor Tafu, hopefully I'm pronouncing that right, from the SDA church to give us a prayer.
What a privilege this morning to say our prayer, but before I say so, do you mind me reading a scripture before I say a prayer?
Not at all.
What a privilege. I'm reading from the book of Isaiah. Is this not the fast that I have chosen? To lose the bonds of wickedness, to undo the heavy burdens, to let the oppressed go free, and that you break every yoke. Is it not to share your bread with the hungry, and that you bring to your house the poor who are cast out? When you see the naked, that you cover him, and not hide yourself from your own flesh; then your light shall break forth like the morning, your healing shall spring forth speedily, and your righteousness shall go before you. The glory of the Lord shall be your reicard. Then you shall call, and the Lord will answer. You shall cry, and he will say, Here I am. If you take away the yoke from your mitts, the pointing of finger and speaking wickedness, if you extend your soul to the hungry and satisfy the afflicted soul, then your light shall dawn in the darkness, and your darkness shall be as the noonday. The Lord will guide you continually and satisfy your soul in drought and strengthen your bones. You shall be a watered garden, and like a spring of water whose waters do not fail. Praise God, I want to thank God for His word. I would like to sing a song, just one verse, then I will say a prayer, if that's okay.
That's fine, I saw the guitar.
What a privilege to represent Jesus here, and want to thank you for opening the door for Christian ministers to come and be involved. So praise God, I'd like to sing a song about my Jesus before I say a prayer. I will serve Him because I love He. You have given life to me. I was nothing before You found me. You have given life to me. Heartaches, broken pieces, ruined lives are why You died on Calvary. Your touch was what I longed for. You have given life to me. Let me say a prayer for us this morning.
Thank you.
Our dear heavenly Father, Lord of love, Lord of light, we want to come before You to thank You and acknowledge You being in our lives. Whether we believe You or not, nothing can change the fact that You are existing. You are living forever and You are always with us. Thank You for the opportunity, a door that You have opened this morning, to acknowledge You to our Mount Isa City Council, all the workers and servants who are giving their lives to serve You in this community. Lord, we want to acknowledge You and thank You for the calling. We call is a calling, we call our service a calling because it is sacred, it is our lifestyle, it has to be something that is from our heart to serve You and to find joy in serving others. We will be satisfied, we will feel that we are placed here to be worthy, to be serving others, and it will give us satisfaction, Lord, and joy. Help us, Lord, to serve You, to serve others in Your eyes. We want to thank You for all these workers, I pray for all of them, Lord, and their families, that they may serve this community and this country according to Your will for them. And we want to thank You for speaking to us through Your scripture this morning. I pray that whatever we're going to cover this morning and discuss, Lord heavenly Father, be present and bless us in a very special way as we make plans for this community to prosper. Lord, You have reminded us in the book of Isaiah that there is nothing better than serving others who are in need, those who are oppressed, those who need help. Lord, help us to see that light this morning. We thank You so much, Lord, for Your blessings and answering our prayers in Jesus' powerful name. Amen.
Thank you, amen, and thank you Pastor Tafu. I think it's a nice reminder when you have councillors and community people in the room that we are all one community and we are all in this together. And I think what was really fitting, and when I was listening to your prayer, I thought about when we were in lockdown in 2020 and everybody's at home, everybody's quite frazzled with the fact that we're in a world pandemic, but the council workers all still came to work and they still went out and collected your rubbish, made sure that your basic needs were catered for, even though we just didn't know what was happening with the pandemic. So I think during the pandemic, the real heroes were the council workers, and I've said that quite a few times, but they made sure that our town ran even though we were all, you know, asked to stay home and they still came to work. So thank you very much and I really appreciate you with the song as well because it's put us all in a really nice calm mood for the rest of the meeting, thank you. Oh, and thanks Peter for holding the microphone. Okay, so that takes us to apologies and leaves of absence, and I believe we have nil. And now we are up to public participation and we have some presentations and we'll start off with the community grants. Would you want to... The microphone here. Well, I'd just like to welcome and congratulate the recipients of the community grants round two for 2021. And what I'll do is I'll hand it over to the deputy mayor and he's going to introduce the recipient, the amount they've been awarded and what the project is, is that right? And we're going to hand you the microphone and give you an opportunity to have a chat about what that funding means to you, or anything you'd like to say actually, so here we go.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. So the first up today is the Commerce Northwest represented by Emma Harmon. We have $15,000 that's granted for the Northwest MPX, which people would know as the former Mine Expo. So welcome, congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councillors. The Northwest MPX is just a new fancy name for what you used to know as the Mine X. The reason we've rebranded is because we've also zhuzhed up the event and it's now a conference with an expo on the side as opposed to just an expo. So that's why we've got a new name, new branding, new logo and everything else. And I would like to thank the Mount Isa City Council for coming on board as our only and our very first gold sponsor for 2022. So thank you again.
Thanks, Emma. Okay, next up we have RFDS Mount Isa Base, Anna Kay Saunders representing, and we've got an amount of $4,472. They will purchase medical healthcare equipment for RFDS Mount Isa Base, and RFDS will be purchasing a Bovie Aaron desiccator electro-surgery machine, I know what that is, and a two-part high-low electric examination couch. Well done, thanks.
Good morning, everyone, thank you very much. As you guys know, any drop in the bucket for RFDS is much needed in this community and this region, so on behalf of RFDS Mount Isa, we would like to thank you all, thank you.
Thank you, well done. Okay, next up we have the Mount Isa Hockey Association and Tala Andrasain is the president, $5,000 if someone's here from soccer, purchase of a scoreboard for the hockey grounds. No, okay, we're not here today, so congratulations to those guys. The next up, and I know they're here, the Mount Isa Pistol Club Incorporated, Greg Anderson, $2,150. And that's to become more inclusive, to encourage people with special needs to join the pistol club, well done.
Good morning all, thank you very much for this community grant, it couldn't have happened at a better time. We were approached by Shanae and the Brisbane Commercial Rifle Club to see if we could help Shanae go further in the future with her special needs. This grant will help her with the facilities that we need to help and other elder shooters that we have and younger as well. Yeah, really appreciate it, it's going to go a long way with new gear. I'll just let Shanae say a couple of words about what we're doing.
Hello, thank you. I am greatly appreciated for this grant because I don't know who read the grant application, but I submitted a letter alongside it and it explained how, I guess, the option was either, do I stay at the club in Brisbane? And, because I'd been talent identified to potentially shoot at the 2032 Para Olympics, and, but then it was a, I still had that emptiness of I need to work. So I'm a physio at the hospital here and I approached the hospital saying, you know, do you have any work? And they said, yes, we've got, you know, the perfect amount for you. So I'm only able to work two half-days. So it was, okay, I'll come to Mount Isa, I'll work, but then it was a, do I let that shooting dream go? So that's why I approached the pistol club and I said, can you help? They had no idea and they were just like, yes, we can help, we can, you know, we started off, we made a stand out of sandbags and then when this grant opportunity came, that's why we decided to apply for it to allow me to get the appropriate equipment so then I can also work here and give back to the community as well as potentially train for something in the future. And then if it all comes to plan, you know, I'll be able to represent the pistol club Mount Isa and to, I guess, you know, make the town known more than just a mining town. There's more opportunities out here for everyone and to provide that inclusiveness. And, because I know as a physio at the hospital, there are more people with disabilities in the town and to provide that opportunity for them and to, you know, I started, got the ball rolling, but now we have the equipment available for other people to be able to come and shoot and, and like Greg said, even if it's someone that maybe just doesn't have the strength, they can come and shoot, they can come and enjoy that sport or come try it rather than going, oh, I can't hold a gun, it's a bit heavy. So yes, we are very grateful for this grant, so thank you.
Can I just say, very well spoken and I think it's great to hear these stories because I think it's not only important for the community to hear, but it's also important for us councillors to hear how these grants impact on... And I certainly am looking forward to the Olympics and also the Para Olympics and I really hope that as a council, we can support our community, make sure that we have people representing Mount Isa, so I really appreciate that story, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have another one, Mount Isa Motorsports and Rec Inc., and they're unable to attend today, but they received $1,000 for the Mount Isa Motor Show 2022, which was held on the weekend. The Mount Isa Motor Show will be delivering the Mount Isa, yeah, August the 8th at Buchanan Park. Look, they're probably all working on their motor cars, but I think there's a burgeoning motorsports contingent here which we all need to, you know, to acknowledge and I think this is a very good grant. So I'll move on to the next one. Oh, it is too, yeah, the 8th of August at Buchanan Park, there's a motor show, yeah. So we've got Good Shepherd Catholic Parish, Father Mick Lowcock, Marie Carlin and Edna Anderson receiving $4,939. For the Good Shepherd Parish, they'll be delivering the Multicultural Festival 2022 and it's an annual event embracing the diverse cultures in Mount Isa.
Thanks very much councillors, and the Mount Isa Multicultural Festival is always the first Friday in September in time with Multicultural Week in Queensland. This year the theme is New Zealand and Pacific Islands. I go back to a couple of years ago when India were our theme place and the Indian community said after that event, they felt really a part of Mount Isa as a result of being acknowledged. And I think one of the things, while we know we're a multicultural community, just acknowledging the various cultures makes people feel really a part of it, so I thank you for the grant. Thank you.
Okay, next up we have the PCYC Mount Isa, Sergeant Dean Hanrahan and Trista Buckley. They'll receive $4,950 and that's for the Ruby program, Rise Up and Be Yourself. And that's for PCYC to deliver the Ruby, Rise Up Be Yourself program for women experiencing domestic violence.
Thank you councillor for the wonderful support. I'm here on behalf of Sergeant Amy Sewell, who's then the branch manager at the PCYC, couldn't be here today. So the Ruby program, yeah, it stands for Rise Up Be Yourself. It's a free physical fitness program for women who are, have been or are likely to be experiencing domestic and family violence. It's held weekly down at the PCYC and it's designed to empower women by building physical strength and contributing to general wellbeing, emotional resilience, self-esteem and confidence through physical exercise in a violence-free and safe environment. The program gives participants a different outlet and tools to combat the domestic and family violence cycle by fostering connected relationships with other women in a safe group environment. So that's a really important part of the initiative. Sessions are facilitated by a qualified PT and a female member of the QPS, usually Amy, attends and participates. So the program is a conduit for the needs of women and creates a cultural change to facilitate them to a place of survivorship. It links them in with existing local services for support, information, referrals and resources, and partners with the QPS to ensure that positive relationships are formed with all participants and members of the QPS. Logistically, what the funding looks like, it'll fund 33 sessions of Ruby, including catering, transport and a female PT. So once again, to councillor, thank you very much.
Okay, a couple more to go, we've got the Isa Scan Powerboat Club Incorporated, Jared Oliviero and Guido Pittis for $4,000, the grant is, and it's for the Mundara Mash 2022. The Isa Scan Powerboat Club will be delivering the Mount Isa City Council Mundara Mash 2022, which is water-based activities open to people with all abilities.
Beautiful, thanks very much. Once again, thanks Mount Isa City Council. The Mundara Mash that we talked about is, was our inaugural one we held last year. It's all about all abilities, so we had all abilities water sports from Townsville come out, so they bought an adaptive water ski, so people with a physical or a mental disability could actually get out on the water and water ski. So it's all about making them part of the club and getting more inclusive in a sport that's normally a bit more difficult to have those people sort of involved in, so it's good, thank you.
Okay, we've got Mount Isa Camp Draft Association Incorporated up next and Mac Tully representing, so $10,040, that's for the Mount Isa Camp Draft for a full weekend of horsing sports and family fun, and that's due on July 7th to July 9th this year.
And now I'd just like to thank the Mount Isa City Council for supporting the camp draft and hopefully we'll put on a good show like we did last year and it'll bring a bit of money to the town and everyone will benefit, thank you very much.
Okay, and the final one today, and not the least one by any stretch, is the Mount Isa Agricultural Society. So we have Anne Pittis, the president, and Vicky Williams, the secretary, representing. They're receiving $38,500 for the fabulous annual Mount Isa show, which is celebrating its 40th year this year, very prestigious event for Mount Isa, thank you.
Thank you Mayor, thank you Deputy Mayor and thank you councillors. The money that we've received is very well appreciated. As has already been stated, this is our 40th year of holding the Mount Isa show and it is run by a very dedicated bunch of volunteers. Two of our volunteers have actually been there for the full 40 years, so it's a big thank you to them and this is something that we do for all the community to come and see. We don't plug it for the tourists or anything, it's for us, it's for our community. And the money that we have is going to be spent on trying to give you the best show that we can possibly achieve, so thank you very much.
That's it, I think, Madam Mayor.
And thanks very much for that, I was talking to Mayor Greg Campbell and he's sprouting about his show is the best show in the North West, so let's knock it out of the park. Okay, so we've got a couple of other things that we want to give some money for, so every Friday, council workers come into council, dressed casually, and they have a gold coin donation or whatever they would like to donate, and casual for a cause. And usually by the end of the month, we put the money together and the staff pick a charity that they would like to donate their money to. So if you ever come in on a Friday, we're all pretty cash, but it's all for a great cause. So for November and December, which would have been 2021, the cause was Man Up. And Man Up was established in 2010 by Brian and Jill Castello after Brian was diagnosed with prostate cancer. Determined to make a difference, Brian and Jill realised there was a need to educate men about prostate cancer and the need to create awareness about early detection and regular testing. In particular, they recognised a need in providing hands-on help, support and information to men in rural and remote communities. Men in these areas have a 27% increased chance of dying from prostate cancer than men in major cities. Very proud to say that the council staff have raised a total amount of $534,030. Do we have someone from staff would like to collect this? Thank you, did you want to say anything?
Man Up is a very important part of everyone's lives in regards with prostate cancer. I get tested regularly, as we all should, because it's something that can, you're not aware of it until the test points it out, and a lot of the time, once you do become aware of it without being tested, it can be too late. So I think this is a great initiative and I hope it continues on into the future. Thank you.
Thanks Ross. This is another one and it's on the other end of the spectrum, which is Endometriosis Australia, and this was raised in March. This is a worldwide campaign aimed at raising awareness of endometriosis. Endometriosis Australia was Australia's first endometriosis organisation created in 2012. Endometriosis Australia endeavours to increase recognition of endometriosis, provide endometriosis education programs and help fund endometriosis research. The council staff have raised a staggering amount of $1,180. Well done. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, I know what this is, would you like to explain?
Yeah, I'm not the staff member to put this one forward, I just helped organise some of it, she just wasn't able to be here today. We actually encourage our staff to put forward... She just wasn't able to be here today. We actually encourage our staff to put forward organisations that they would like to have us raise funds for. And the reason we got so much for this one was actually because one of our staff members bravely had a bake sale. She ended up raising tons of money and everyone bought lots of cupcakes and great food. And it was just really good to see our staff work towards raising funds, it's something that they actually felt passionate about. So that's something that we're definitely trying to do this year in particular, is just encourage everyone to put forward a charity that they actually can't wait to donate for. So thank you to Caitlin Hovey, who isn't here today, but this is a great amount and thanks for everyone for donating.
Thank you. So we've gone from men to women, which is fantastic. And now we're actually going to something very dear to everybody. And this is Ukrainian Community of Queensland Incorporated, and this was raised in April. Council officer Svetla has spearheaded a massive fundraising effort for UCQ, assisting the Humanitarian Assistance Council in raising funds for the Ukrainian refugees, things such as medical treatments, crisis accommodation and disability equipment and food. In addition to casual for a cause, Svetla has organised cook-offs and a sale on international food, a bake sale and craft items. And again, the council staff have raised a staggering $4,770. Put your hands together.
I would like to thank you, everyone in this community, for your huge support. I would like to thank you, of course, David and Deputy Baric for support, Mayor. You know, Ukraine, my, my home. And we are going through very difficult times now. When it started, I thought it will finish very soon, but unfortunately it's not finishing yet. But we are going there, we are going towards the victory. Hopefully it will finish soon then late and with your support and with the support around the world. It will finish soon then late. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to the conclusion of the giveaways of money.
I think we're going to adjourn for group photos. Is that the plan? Ashley? We just adjourn for group photos with the award recipients here for a few minutes.
So the time is 9:33 AM and we will adjourn for ten minutes? Ten minutes. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor Streton. All those in favour? And that's carried. I'll now suspend the minutes of the meeting to invite any members from the public to speak. And I have got one registered speaker that I'll invite firstly, and that's Peter Bolcher. Peter, if you could just stand up and talk into the microphone and just introduce yourself, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to address the council this morning. There's a couple of matters. The first is an easement between Kukata Road and Fitzchafin Street, which only takes the stormwater from one slot on the left-hand side of Kukata Road, runs into the easement, which is completely overgrown. I complained to the council. And then later on, I saw this one individual contractor who was sent to cut it out. I thought the council would all come out and cut it out, no trouble. But it was highly, very overgrown, because I've supplied the council with photos of it. But I got speaking to him and he said it comes under Harbour and Marine, Science and Environment Department, which is in Cairns. Now, I think it's outrageous that money is going to Cairns. They wouldn't have a clue what's happening on Kukata Road or anywhere else in Mount Isa. So Mount Isa City Council should apply to the state government to get that funding that is going to Cairns so they can maintain these easements and everything. It's outrageous that money's going to bureaucrats in Cairns. And it was overgrown, you just couldn't get in there and water was supposed to go down there. So I'd like the Mount Isa City Council to look at state, you know, putting the submission into the state government to get those funds so it comes into your hands, your responsibility, and not Health, Science and Environment Department in Cairns, who are run by a bag of bureaucrats. So that's my terrible opinion, but all on the same subject. Anyway, it's been done, it's very nice. I feel it should be concrete and filled in and a nice walk area or something.
Thanks, Peter. We'll definitely, I'll get some more information on that and take that on board.
And I've supplied David with photos of it all. And then another extreme problem is the river crossing at the end of Mile Street, just near Sonic Medical Health. That is completely overgrown. They're two metres high. Again, that's under Science and Environment Department in Cairns, or someone told me it could come under the Harbour and Marines in Townsville, but not Mount Isa. It's just unbelievable. This is dating back to the 50s and it hasn't changed. And so all this money should be coming into the Mount Isa City Council so they can support it. And I would like the councillors to drive down to the end of Mile Street and see how bad it is, because we've only had two, two hours of rain in this whole summer. We're picking up to seven cyclones hit Queensland coast. We never had any cyclones and it all turned into a rain depression down north New South Wales, northwest New South Wales and flooding. But the creek cannot cope with any water at the end of Mile Street. It's just completely overgrown and it should be investigated, but it's not council's problem, you know. But the council's got to try and get that money from the state government so they can do maintenance. And also, I drove into, there's a bit of areas, and I parked and walked down there and there's a concrete going across the creek, which is, I think, the squirrel line or sawm water encased in concrete. And there's continuous water, clear water running over that. And I would like the council to investigate whether that's a broken water pipe. Where is that water coming from? Because it's not rainwater and it's continuously raining, running. It's very, it's filtered water. And so whether it's an overflow from the pump station, I don't know, but if the council could investigate that, that's the creek at the end of Mile Street. One other thing, and not listed, but I would like to mention.
Peter, before you finish, what I might do is I'll get council officers to give councillors an update just on what you've talked about with these two issues in our next workshop and we'll, and we'll get back to you on some of the outcomes.
Much appreciated. Can I mention one thing about garbage collection?
Sure.
I opened the door at 7.30 this morning, and the garbage truck was driving along at 50 miles, 50 kilometres an hour. Because in Kukata Road, which is 47 houses, there was not one bin put out today. Because our rubbish goes Thursday, and they went Wednesday. And the ones who get their collection done on Friday is getting done tomorrow, which is normally our day. So, we've got to wait five days till Monday to get our bin now doubly loaded up. And I don't know why, when Thursday's collection resulted, only Friday's collection should have been cancelled, and they would have only had to wait till five days. Whereas now, we've got to wait five days for our rubbish bins to be cleared.
And Peter, did you get a magnet with our calendar with the dates on the rubbish?
Yeah, obviously, very few people have it. But I went out at seven o'clock to go and put it out in the rubbish. The truck, like a flash of lightning passed, because he had nowhere to stop. So, they've had a great day today, they'll probably finish about 12 o'clock. So, I would like that to be rectified for next year, because I don't feel a lot of people have, because we have no Northwest Star printed paper, a lot of people don't even realise the show's on this weekend. So, a lot of people are going to be upset because their bins are overflowing for five days. And if that could be rectified for next year. But these are very good, but people should be emphasised to put them on their fridge. Thank you very much.
Thank you Peter, and we might investigate more ways to get our message out there. So, that's good feedback, thank you so much for that. Okay, well, I'd like to invite anyone else in the public gallery who'd like to speak. And if you can just stand and talk into the microphone and say your name, and that'd be great.
My name's Gail Gallagher, and I just wanted to make a response to what Peter Bolger has just said about the rubbish collection. I did see that it was on social media, which has been one of my complaints to council about social media, and not everyone is on social media. And it was just a fluke that I sort of found it. But again, the message doesn't get out there regarding the show, the message has not been out there. They've had their office here in Hopkins Arcade, who knew it was there? What is out there around town? I have not seen a banner, I have not seen a poster, I have not seen anything anywhere to say, hey, our show is on, come and be involved. So, it goes back to there's not enough communication happening around this town for what is happening around town. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. And we definitely understand that, and we're finding the same problem with getting our message out there to the community. So, we'll investigate a few more ways we can. And just because we're live streamed, I'll just reiterate what Peter has said, because you probably can't hear him. But he's suggesting that our A4 back-to-back newsletter that we send out on a monthly basis, maybe have some more information on that. So, that's definitely one thing we can investigate. Oh, fortnightly, sorry, yeah. Thank you, David. So, yeah, so we might be able to investigate different ways to get our message out there. And those A4 pieces of paper are left at Coles, Woolworths, and the two news agencies, I believe. Do we have any other venues where you drop them off to? Just those ones at the moment. So, we'll investigate. Okay, thank you, Peter. Okay, so is there anyone else in the public gallery that would wish to speak today? Would you like to stand up, please?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for that. Hi, my name is Leanne Cumming, I spoke at last week's special meeting. I just wanted to reiterate a few things that was discussed prior to your actual final vote on the rates. Also, I wanted to thank the councillors that took my call over the last two days. Councillor Coghlan, Councillor Fortune, and Deputy Mayor. I didn't receive a response from Councillor McCrae or Councillor Streton. I did receive a phone, I did speak with Councillor Tully. However, he wanted to meet with me in person, which that didn't eventuate. But thank you, the councillors here took the time to actually speak with me and listen to, you know, my concerns. But also, I wanted more clarity around how you propose a 6% general rate rise and a 3% water rate increase. Unfortunately, those responses were not uniform. So, I'm still not sold on why you want to increase the rate 6% and the water 3%, considering after asking, surely there could be some more budget cuts? You could actually look at, why do we have to have all these exorbitantly priced projects in this budget? Most of you have been in two terms. Why is everything seems to be bumbled into one? Because you keep talking about this 100-year centenary, you've had two terms to plan this. After I talked about multiple people I know I work with, my elderly pensioner parents, people on disability that are ratepayers, people that are on, you know, veterans' pension, they all receive like the lowest salary in the whole country. It's probably just a little bit above a Centrelink New Start recipient. I don't even know how they buy food and pay utility bills. And then you go and put these extra exorbitant rate rises on top of that. It's all right for you if you work and have a business or have other extra income, and it waters off a duck's back to pay, doesn't matter what rate increase it is. I could afford mine, but I don't want to afford any more rates while it's being wasted on a lot of projects that are benefiting a small minority in our community. Another question that couldn't be answered from either of anyone I spoke to, and even in the previous meeting, I still haven't received a response from all these questions I asked at last week's meeting. They still haven't found where my invite is. The invite that I received notification that they received my feedback by the G date to the right address, email address. So, I've got that notification or receipt, but still, they don't know where it is. So, that's very disappointing, it still is. I have a copy of, the actual copy where I sent it, date and time stamped. But funny how it can't be found at this end in the council.
Thank you.
So, I'm not finished, Danielle. So, what I was saying also to the councillors, and I've mentioned as well, that other revenue streams need to be looked at. As, you know, with Glencore rates, they definitely need to be increased to be in line with other mining companies in our state. So, the residential rate payer, don't forget about the people that are renting as well. Because no way landlords want to have to pay extra rates themselves. The tenants will be stuck with that, so they essentially are ratepayers themselves, but not to the high degree the actual homeowner is and the property owner is. So, I said, you know, how about looking at increasing those rates? And don't worry about doing it for the next budget and offering a lower rate next budget, because it'll make you look good so you can get re-elected. How about think about doing it now? Every year, it's been going up without consideration for people who can't afford their rates. People are that behind, what's the deficit, 11 million? And you keep putting it up, they can't even pay rates from seven years ago. I know people have had to actually sell their homes, and now they're renting or they're staying with family to make ends meet. They're no longer ratepayers. They're just contributing to their family and burdening them as well. So, those families are paying rates and looking after their families. My elderly parents are lucky they have me and my brothers and sisters to help. Not every elderly person has the support network my family have. So, when they can't afford their rates or their water rates, and that's why their place looks like a dust bowl and disgusting, it's an embarrassment. You talk about you want this place to look great for the city, for tourism. And they see all what's going on, the CBD, but then they divert into the suburbs, so embarrassing. Bad enough when our roads, little bit of rain. And our roads have potholes everywhere, damaging our vehicles. No one can afford all the insurance claims, your premium gauge up, you should know. And when I ask the question, so how many people use the big budgeted project that you want to put in? Put in 550,000 this year, so we can have a car park and a walkway up the hill for people to exercise. No one could answer me, how many people use Telstra Hill? They couldn't even give me a percentage. How do you know then how many, that it's highly used if you don't even know? Did you carry out, conduct a research study on this? Well, this is someone else's idea, and you thought it was great, let's go along with it. Because it was suggested last term, you know, under a previous management. So, if you can't even answer that, then I don't know about what lots of people mean then. You can't give figures, there's no evidence there. And then 650,000 the following year, budgeted, for a what? A walkway from Tafe to Telstra Hill? And then 550,000 every year after that? You should be ashamed of yourselves for a minority gain while these people are struggling here. They just want essential services done well. Is that hard to get through your heads? You might be happy with your services, whatever yous are doing, put projects you're placing in that benefit you and your family associates. Think about everyone else who's been paying rates all these years. So, you haven't even considered it. Stop pulling figures out of thin air. Actually strategically look at those budgets and the costings and be fair. What you've done, if you make this decision today to continue with this proposal, I don't think you'll have any chance, very slim chance, of being re-elected next term. You want to be elected again? Have a, consider this, consider what you're doing. You're impacting on a lot of people, majority of the community, other people are renters. They don't want their, you know, rents going up either. It's all right for you when you're in a comfortable financial position. There's other things as well, your budget is not very transparent. The way it's written, I don't even see AFL written in there anywhere. It's written under some kind of RCFL fund, whatever does that mean to anyone who reads that. How about they fundraise like other sporting organisations in our community and contribute? And then consider matching some dollars they fundraise, not 150,000 from state government. The budget doesn't even clarify what's actually rate payer costed or charged versus state. And when you ask questions, you just all try to muddle it together like, oh, there's a bit of state funding there with a little bit of local. But when asked how much, everyone has to go Google. Don't even know your own budget. You should know your budget, you put this in place, and you want us to pay for it. You want ratepayers, you want renters, you want people struggling, can't even buy. That extra money each week could buy food, necessary fuel, medical costs that aren't under the PBS, they had to pay private for. Not everyone gets concessions, and you think a pensioner getting an extra increase a fortnight's going to help? They'd use that to buy these essential feeds they need to live, medication. They don't have that, they may, you know, who knows? You won't have longevity of their life. But you don't seem to care about any of that, because you just have it in your mind, you want to put this through, because that's what you want to do. You don't give a damn what anyone seems to say, because have you taken on any of the feedback in the community? And if you believe that no one has any objections, then yous are all delusional. Lots of people have objections. I know a lot of people in the community, I've networked with a lot of people. And they've not said one really good word in years about any of yours.
Leanne, we're just coming almost up to your time.
And don't forget too, people are still struggling post-Covid, it's not even post-Covid, this is with us forever. Pete, they've lost their jobs, that means they don't have extra income to come in either. So, they won't be able to pay, afford rates. I've had elderly people say that they're really upset, they're thinking of selling their home and leaving. So, then they will just burden a family member as well. So, they won't become, don't think they'll become ratepayers and they'll have the same position, because they won't. Sadly, we are losing people, my parents may be one of them. So, like I said, strongly think about starting, making revenue from other avenues instead of the residential and the struggling ratepayers of Mount Isa. Stop wasting our money on erecting fences and six months later taking them down. I don't know what the purpose of all this, planting trees and then pulling them out at a cost of ratepayers again. Can't you make a decision on what's suitable and leave it there? Going over and over and around and around the same crap. How about looking into our suburbs? I'd be embarrassed if anyone goes into our suburbs that'd never been here before. They're shocked. What, we tell them to stay on the main street, because that's where all the money's been focused? CBD, tourism, and the minority community of Mount Isa. So, like I said, if you don't reconsider, if you can't even cut this in half today or down to nothing, then like I said, I don't think there'd be very slim chances anyone would ever consider you to represent them as Mount Isa City councillors ever again.
Thank you. Do we have any other members of the public who wish to speak?
Hi, my name's Lucy Sanderson. I'd just like to say a little bit about the water increase. Now, last year, it went up from 87 cents to 90 cents, and they told us that was a 3% increase, which is actually more. I gather this year it will go up to 93 cents, which if you take it from 87 cents to 93 cents increase, that's actually a 9% increase, not 3% and 3% like you're saying. And I think we've paid far too much for our water now. And that's why people are just not watering. The foot baths aren't getting watered, the yards aren't getting watered. And you talk about lead smudge, I'm sorry, but that's even more dangerous for our children than it was before then. If we can't water, we're going to have dust bowls, bigger dust bowls. So, what does that do to the health of our children? Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have a final speaker?
I've asked this lovely lady to hold the microphone for me. My name is Kim Marie Burton. No, I can hold that, I'm just shaking, sorry. My shaking is an essential tremor brought about by trauma, it is not because I am nervous. Before I ask my question of the council, I'd just like to make a couple of points on what was said during your presentation of financial gifts to the various sports. To Shana, I'm sorry she isn't here, because I would like to have told her that Mount Isa was the home of champions. Mount Isa has produced three Olympic game representatives, and one who came back with a silver medal. The fact that Mount Isa City Council don't recognise those people in any way whatsoever is not good. But we had three. The first was in 1956, and he was a boxer, went to Melbourne. The fact that he didn't win a medal didn't matter to the Mount Isa community, because he was our champion, and his name was Noel Hazard. The fact that Noel hadn't been out of Mount Isa until he went by train to Townsville, and literally fought and won his way to Townsville by having a boxing match every time the train stopped to refuel with water, because it was steam trains in those days. That's fantastic. That's a Mount Isa lad going to the Olympic Games, and he had to fight his way to get there. He is our champion. Four years later, there was a swimmer, a swimmer who swam with one of your councillors' father-in-laws, a swimmer who was chosen to go to Rome in 1960. He went to Rome, and Mount Isa Mines said that is too far away for him to go on his own. This is at a time that the Olympics were an amateur event, not professional as it is now. So, Mount Isa Mines paid for that swimmer's coach to go to Rome as well. That swimmer came home to Mount Isa with Mount Isa's only Olympic medal, and it was a silver. The third Olympian also went, was a swimmer, and he went to Tokyo in 1964. It did not matter that he didn't make the finals, he made the semi-finals. He came home a champion to Mount Isa. I love to tell his story when I'm talking about Mount Isa to the many people that I do speak to, which to date is 172. do speak to, which to date is 172, one hour interactive speeches, talks that I do for visitors to this town and I have addressed personally just over 7,000 visitors. And I tell this story about the chap who went to Tokyo in 1964. He emigrated to Mount Isa in the early 50s, did not know how to speak English, didn't know how to swim, didn't even know what a swimming pool was because he came from the land of the red-nosed reindeer. He was a huckleberry, he was Finnish, his name was Johnny Oravainen. He was Mount Isa's champion and we adored him. Mount Isa has also produced three Commonwealth Games representatives and brought back three silver medals and one gold. Yet again, it was those swimmers in 60 and 62 who went to Perth in 1962, the last of the British Empire Games, the beginning of the Commonwealth Games. And those two swimmers came back with three silver medals. How many of you people knew that? And I will tell you, not one. One of those swimmers, his name was Bill Burton and Peter McCrae's father-in-law swam with him. He came back with two silver medals from Perth and one silver medal from Rome. Does Mount Isa ever acknowledge him? No. Does Mount Isa ever acknowledge the gentleman who came back with a gold medal for road cycling in Vancouver Commonwealth Games in 1992? Does anyone know his name? Thank you very much Mick. Did anyone else know? No.
Yes.
You did? Thank you. What do we do in this town to acknowledge that, those people? I was told by a previous council, that's history, no one's interested. Now, it would have been lovely had Sharna been here this morning accepting the financial benefits from the council. How good is it that she's chosen to come to Mount Isa and work? How great is it that the Pistol Club have taken her on board with her disability? And now the council has supported them, supported her. She doesn't know our past history of sporting professionals from here. And not to mention, you've got the golfer Greg Norman and the tennis player Patrick Brafter. Mount Isa has a fantastic international sporting representation and yet we don't do anything about it and we don't acknowledge it. Having said that, I didn't come here to speak about that, it was just that it happened today. And maybe the council might like to invite me sometime to tell you and explain to you about the history of Mount Isa. There are a lot of people in this town who take up the history of the town on an amateur basis. I actually have been researching and writing about that for many, many, many years. I could make a comment on everything that was said by various sporting groups here today. One of them, I will mention, Camp Draft, who aren't here and how sad that they aren't here, because Camp Draft started in Mount Isa in 1959. Did any of you know that? In 1959? Why 1959? Because Mount Isa, through the Rotary Club, put on the Centenary Celebration Rodeo, not the first Rotary rodeo, the first Centenary Celebration Rodeo conducted by the Rotary Club of Mount Isa. And that was the Centenary Rodeo celebrating Queensland's centenary separation from New South Wales. Camp Draft very, very proudly opened the Mount Isa Rodeo for some 30 odd years, more than 30 years before it was chosen, well Rotary actually decided that they couldn't handle, couldn't have Camp Draft any longer and Camp Draft went out on their own. But Camp Draft have a very proud time with the Mount Isa Rodeo. The show, the Mount Isa Show is celebrating its 40th anniversary this year, but the very first Mount Isa Expo and Trade Exhibition was held at Kelkadoon Park in 1962. We have a lot of history in this town that people don't know about. What people do know about today is the vagrancy in this town, the criminality in this town, juvenile crime in this town. And when you talk about your budget, and I have to say, Leanne here spoke very eloquently last week, passionately about the budget as she has done today. Gail and Lucy have also done that. A lot of your projects on your budget are what I call non-essential cosmetic surgery. And it's interesting that I sit here talking now and one councillor can't even be bothered to put her pen down and listen to me. That's the height of ignorance and I see that in most meetings online. From various councillors, you haven't even got the respect for the person who is speaking to actually take time and listen. I'm also going to say about this criminality, if you put away your non-urgent cosmetic surgery budget and put that money towards doing something for the vacancy of the Aboriginals in this town. I put up with the cacophony of unbelievable language, fighting every night. I have to choose when I fight my wars. Do I ring up every night and tell the police? I had to do that, I had to make that decision, which wasn't hard on Monday night. Because there was a group of 20, 25 people directly outside of my house, fighting in the middle of the street. The language was foul. The language is foul every night, but it's at the end of the street. It was in front of my house the other night. It went for nearly two hours before I decided to ring the police. And that's with all of my house closed up. And I rang, sorry, I'm going to speak.
No, no, I just wanted to let you know, you've just got a couple more minutes.
I'm, I'm going to speak. I chose to ring the police the other night because I was afraid for me and I live behind a six-foot zinc enamel fence. I was concerned about my vehicle at the front. Now, had that vehicle been damaged, I can claim on insurance. Had those people come into my yard, and they have done on separate occasions before, no one pays for the trauma that I suffer. My trauma now is historical, it's gone over a period of time. I rang the police the other night. Can I tell you, the police gave better attention and were more concerned about the alcoholic, drunken Aboriginal vagrants than the way they spoke to me. I did not have one person say to me, and I was shaking like a leaf, are you going to be all right, Kim Marie? Have you got someone with you? No. I have addressed four, if not five inquiries by state and federal governments about crime in Mount Isa and the last one, excuse me. The last time I spoke to an inquiry was in this very chamber and I told the hearing. At that stage, I'd been broken in five times. I woke up at 2:30 one morning with a black fellow lying on top of me. I had my photo taken while I was asleep in my bed by my camera, my mobile, by that bastard. His mates were outside and they stole all of my computers. How did they get into a broken, into a locked place? Because my bathroom window was slightly open and they put a young child, which the police later told me were small fingerprints of about a six-year-old. That child then went through and opened the door. No one, no one to this day has asked me, Kim Marie, are you going to be all right? Kim Marie, are you fine? Can I do something for you? Not one person. No, I'm pretty big, I'm ugly enough, I'm bold enough to stand up and speak for myself. But there are many, many elderly people who can't, who are scared to. So I said, I'll speak for them. But come Monday night, all of that trauma that I thought was behind me came back and it was exacerbated by the fact that the emergency service number, the woman who answered, asked me to go outside and do they have weapons? Said, excuse me, there's a hole in my gate, I can look through there, I can see they're fighting, I can see someone's about to be killed and I don't say that lightly. And I was asked to go out and see if they had weapons. When the police came eventually, because my next-door neighbour had also run emergency, the police went to them and got a report. The police didn't come to me. I had to say, excuse me, one of you going to come and speak to me? Then I was belittled, I was patronised. And I stood there while two policemen and a policewoman were talking to me and I saw how they were speaking to this drunken person on the street. We'll take you in for your safety, get in the back. They spoke to him so nicely. I am going this afternoon to an appointment I've made at the police station. What I want to know from this council, and I've done the preamble, what I would now like to know from this council, what are you going to do? And don't tell me you've got all these different committees, the committee for the vulnerable, the committee for this and the committee for that. Not one of those committees can show me accountability or responsibility or an action for the safety of the citizens of this town. After that kerfuffle on Monday night, outside my house, and in actual fact, they were fighting where I am standing to where councillor Streton is now. Do you think I'm not scared? Later that night, there was a fiasco in Able Smith Parade. I will tell you, there were two different groups, they weren't the same group. My group do not come from Mount Isa. I am going to keep talking.
No, we do have a 15-minute time, can I, can I just round you up to the question?
I will, in a minute. The people that I'm talking about, the vagrant Aboriginals, and I identify them as Aboriginals, they are from the Northern Territory. I was asked by the emergency, what are they saying? I don't know. Well, how do you know they're arguing? I said, because they're talking in their own lingo and their language is vile and that's in English. So I want to know, no Danielle, I want to know what this council is going to do because you've, as this one here, this lady has said here, you've got non-essential cosmetic surgery, putting footpaths in, that money would be better spent safeguarding the citizens of this town. And I would like to know what you intend to do about it, each and every one of you, including those who haven't got any respect to actually take notice and listen to me. That shows the ethos of this council, it is disgusting.
Well, I would just like to thank everybody who spoke here today. It takes a lot of courage to get up and speak in public and I can see that there's a lot of passion in the room. Ms Burton, I'd just like to say I'm really sorry to hear what's happened to you and I, I realise that, but I just want to say I am sorry that this has happened to you and I hope you're okay and if there is anything we can do to help you.
To get over everything, I'm sorry, I'm sorry because I don't accept it.
Can I just say, look, I invite you to come in to see me if you'd like to make an appointment and I'll give you all the time you'd like.
Through the chair, Madam Mayor, the issues that Kim Marie has brought up are very pertinent to Mount Isa, but as, as a resident, it's a state issue and I think a lot more pressure needs to be put on the state member in Mount Isa as well. Council can only do so much, it is a state issue. So the more people go down to the state member's office and the federal member's office and let them know how bad it is getting, nothing will get done.
And I'd just like to say, I've sat across from the Minister of Police and I have basically put the case forward. And he, can I just finish please? And he actually said, hang on a second, and he provided me with statistics that show that Mount Isa's reporting rate is at an all-time low. So, no, no, please let me finish, I'll let you finish. So what is happening is, yes, crime is probably at an all-time high, but residents have stopped reporting. So when you make that decision not to ring up anymore, what happens is, the stats is what helps us get more police in Mount Isa. So I encourage everyone in Mount Isa to report windows broken, vandalism, anything, just report it because the police will tell you in Mount Isa, please report it because without those statistics, I can't sit across from a minister and ask for more police in Mount Isa when I haven't got the data to back it up. So I know it can be frustrating with reporting online, yes, I've done it myself, but that's what we have to do as a community, we have to report every single thing. This will really help ensure that we get extra police on the beat. And again, I concur with councillor Coghlan, this is a state issue and one of the things council does is we do reach out to nearly every organisation in Mount Isa and bring them together to ask how we can support as a council. As you know, we're rates, we're water, we're rubbish, we're the basics, but we do understand that livability is part of Mount Isa and we are doing what we can and we are putting pressure on different organisations and we are asking if we can help. So that, that's definitely important. I invite anyone in this room to meet with me and I can actually say there's a couple of people in this room that every month come and have a couple with a councillor with me and I really appreciate that because that's my, I really enjoy hearing that feedback and I invite you, Ms Burton, to come along to a couple with a councillor, it's, it's a lot less formal and we do document things that are raised and see if we can address them. But my office is open as well, so if you want to come in or if you want to meet with a particular councillor, I know they will be on board. And just going back to what you said about world champions, did you know we had two great whites?
Yes, I do.
Yes, so we had obviously Greg Norman, who was a great white shark, but we also had John White and he was a world champion squash player, born in Mount Isa, grew up in Pamela Street on the squash courts and became a world champion in 2004. So I'm well aware of.
They're world champions and we have several of them from this town.
That's right.
But I'm talking about Olympic and Commonwealth Games.
Sorry, I just wanted to acknowledge what you said about.
Well, maybe the council shouldn't acknowledge all of those sporting people as well. And they don't, they never have done.
Ms Burton, can I just finish?
Sorry.
So one of the things we've identified as a council is we don't have a place to put all our history. And at Back at Isa was starting to be that, but we've identified that it's not really happening there. So we're doing master plans and we've completed a master plan for at Back at Isa, we're also doing a master plan for the library because again, there's a lot of history stored there and a lot of it's packed away and no one gets to see it. So we're looking at ideas on the actual master plan, how we can actually showcase our history. And of course, sport is a big part of that and there's no doubt about that. But let me finish before you. I just want to say that, again, I would be happy to meet with you or come to a couple with a councillor and I really appreciate you coming here and speaking up and I really just want to take my hat off, it takes a lot of courage to come and speak at council and whether it's at a couple with a councillor or if it's writing a letter or an email or in fact ringing councillors, that takes a lot of courage and I thank you for that. And sometimes we don't, you know, always want to hear some of the feedback, but it's important we do. So thank you very much for giving us feedback today. And if you do need to say, if you would like to talk more, my doors are open or again, welcome to come to any of the community engagements that we're having in the future. So thank you so much, everybody.
Madam Mayor, through the chair, if I just might add two things to that. You said about reporting and statistics and that, and then police link. One thing that I have taken to the state government and the opposition leader knows as well, police link when you ring up, they say put it online. But in Kim Marie's case, and I say this to all people in the public, stand firm on the phone and do not go to your computer and do it online. Make them take your call, make them put you through, and they can take all the information off you through the phone verbally. It's a system that's not working, they're quite well aware of it, but what we need to do is stand firm. Some people cannot get to a computer, and in Kim Marie's case, if that was happening to you, there's no way in the world you can sit back, go to a computer and write about it. You need to be on the phone and they need to take your message. The other thing with the sporting heroes, I can assure the Mount Isa public that we will be doing something for the 100 years with all our sporting champions.
Thank you councillor Coglan. Can I just put you on a very quick time limit?
I will, I'll be on very quick history. You're saying that you're interested in the history of Mount Isa, you want to do things at Outback at Isa. Outback at Isa have been throwing out historical items for many years, several years, more recently. The Underground Hospital has done the same thing, the library does the same thing. Because every time someone new comes in, it doesn't fit in with what they think they should do or what they want to have in their area, so they throw it away. And sadly, that also applied to the North West Star.
Can I just?
So thank you.
Thank you, and look, we do recognise we need a place for our history. So that is definitely something we're talking about. Thank you. Can I just get you a microphone and identify yourself, sorry?
Just wanted to quickly say that certain issues might be a state issue. But as you so clearly stated at the beginning of this meeting, we are a community and we are all in this together.
Thank you. And I just want you to, I just want to reiterate that we all live in this community. We're all aware of what's going on, and none of us are being quiet on the subject. We're all being very vocal. And we may not do things in the media, and on my part, that's deliberate. Because I don't want someone who's thinking about moving to Mount Isa, Googling Mount Isa and seeing a message from the mayor of Mount Isa saying, youth crime is out of control. That is not something I want in the media. And there's a lot of things happening behind the scenes that we are trying to influence and trying to support. And yes, we acknowledge that, you know, we are trying. And again, it is a state government issue, like councillor Coglan said, but we are, as a council, we are trying to be involved. So I'm not trying to shut anyone down, but I thought, Lucy, have you got one quick thing? And then we need to really move on because we've got a long, big agenda.
Hi, Kaye Bella from Cameronwill has been trying to contact you all morning. And I mean, you can only send the phone for so long, so maybe it'd be nice if one of you contacted her so she could talk. She'd like to talk at this meeting.
Okay, has anyone heard from anyone? No, do you have her number?
Why are we ringing people now?
Yeah.
Can I just say that, and this is our policy, that usually we only hear from three people, and 15 minutes is the max. And I think you can agree that we've actually gone for well over 50 minutes and we've let everyone in the room speak. And I'm really, I'd just like to put the invitation out to Kaye. If she does want to catch up with myself or the councillors, we'll make time for her. And I'm really sorry that we just can't include it at this point, but thank you for letting us know. Okay, so. I wish I could, but we're really so far behind now that we're up to 50 minutes when it should be 15. So, but again, I'm happy to meet with anyone or arrange another time for. Unfortunately, I can't go against the policy, and so we've sort of already. Yep, and I think, you know, you're right, and that's why I gave everyone the opportunity to speak today. And really was very lenient with the time limits that people had to speak. And I think that everyone can walk away feeling like they had a chance to put their thoughts forward. Thank you. So that takes us now to item number five, which is the confirmation of the previous minutes meeting.
Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation for 5.1 and also read out the item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the chair, I'd like to recommend item 5.1, that the council receiver, Nate the Minister of the Miners Memorial Advisory Committee, held on the 21st of April 2022.
Thank you councillor Tully, can I get a second for that motion?
McCray.
Thank you councillor McCray. Councillor Tully, any comments on this motion?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with comments on this motion? Okay, all those in favour, and that's carried. That takes us now to item 5.2, which is the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 19th of May. Can I get someone to move the officer's recommendation, please?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 19th of May 2022 be received and the recommendations therein be adopted.
Thank you, can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Deputy Mayor, any comments on this one?
No, thanks, Madam Mayor, they're all outlined in the minutes.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, all those in favour, and that's carried. Okay, that takes us to item 6.1, which is the outstanding actions from previous council meetings as of the 15th of June 2022. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council receives and notes outstanding actions from previous council meetings as of 15th of June 2022.
Thank you, can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Would you like to comment on this one?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, there's three items listed there, from 16th of second, 19th of the fifth, and the 27th of the fourth. And they're largely projects that are in hand. And I believe some of those have been completed, so they're well in hand, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no more comments, all those in favour, and that's carried. And would someone like to move that council accepts the supplementary item 14.6, the family fun park construction tenders, put consideration into confidential business? Would someone like to move that?
So move, Coglan.
Thank you councillor Coglan, would someone like to second?
McCray.
Thank you councillor McCray, all those in favour, and that's carried. Now can I ask councillors, if, as in item number seven, does anyone here have any declarations of conflicts of interest?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to declare a declarable conflict of interest with items 11.11, 11.12, to do with Mount Isa rodeo and Mount Isa Indigenous rodeo, as the rodeo CEO is my husband's goddaughter. I'll be leaving the room.
Thank you.
Through the chair, councillor Coglan, I have a declarable conflict of interest on 11.1. I'm the president of the Mount Isa Touch Association, and I'll be leaving the meeting for that decision.
11.10. So 11.10?
No, 11.1, isn't it?
Oh, it'd be fine, it's 10.
11.1, yeah. One zero, sorry.
That's all right.
Yeah, 11.1 for budget.
That's what I was looking, conflict with the budget.
Please stay for that, councillor.
I have a declarable conflict of interest with item 11.10, which is the concession to waive and write off. I am a board member of the Mount Isa Irish Club, and the Mount Isa, the Tony White Oval is up for consideration. I would like to stay in the room because the Oval does not pay rates and it does not pay for water. So I would like to stay in the room for that one. Do we vote that one now? So would anyone like to move the motion that I be allowed to stay in the room for item 11.10?
So move, Coglan.
Thank you, can I get a second for that motion?
McCray.
Thank you councillor McCray, all those in favour? I think that's carried, thank you. And the other item that. Item number 14.3, just in regard to a performance review. I would have a declarable conflict, and I would just like to remove myself from that item. Does anybody else here have any declarable?
Yes, sorry, through the chair, Madam Mayor, 11.10. I'm on the committee of the Mount Isa Race Club and I'll be leaving the room.
Thank you councillor Tully. Thank you. Thank you so much. That takes us to item eight, which is a merrill minute, which is nil. And then we'll move on to item nine, which is reading and consideration of the correspondence. So that's 9.1. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation for item 9.1, which is the correspondence report for May 2022?
Move, Barwick.
Thank you deputy mayor, can I get a second for that motion?
Streton.
Thank you councillor Streton. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on any?
Madam Mayor, I think the letters are fairly self-explanatory and quite some good ones there from endometriosis and others. I did want to highlight though in 9.1, the letter from the Director General of the state, the local government department. And he's outlined a few things there that we need to keep on top of as a council in terms of our administration and management of our finances. And I am pleased to say, just going through the list, that we are, have a lot of these well in hand and we are working on them. So dot point one there is having an effective and active internal audit function, which we do, we've had for quite some time. Also, the value of having an effective asset management plan to support council's understanding of time and costs and ongoing maintenance, planning spending on council projects. I know that's well in hand, and there's certainly allowance for that in the new budget going forward. And also, the final one he mentions here is that the importance of the monthly financial management reports tabled at each council meeting and detail both the unrestricted cash balance and the cash cover ratios. And that's as a means of informing councillors about our liquidity. And items of those are already in place and have been for quite some time. And I'm advised by the Director of Finances that in the new budget going forward, that we'll be making early adoption of the cash cover ratios, and that so that we can keep the councillors informed. And I think we're quite a long way in advancing all these items that he has mentioned in the letter, thank you.
Thank you deputy mayor. If no one else has any comments, all those in favour, and that's carried. Right, so that takes us to item 10.1, which is the LGAQ 2022 Civic Leaders Summit for 29th and 30th of June. Would someone like to move a recommendation?
Yeah, I will. I'd like to recommend that council is represented at the Local Government Association Queensland LGAQ Civic Leaders Summit to be held at Twin Waters from the 29th to the 30th of June 2022 by Mayor Danny O'Slade and councillor Kim Coglan.
I wasn't actually going to go to that meeting.
Should have.
I was happy to put my name forward for that. And I'm okay to go by myself. David, don't panic.
If things change and I'm already down there, I may try and change that. But at the moment, I'm happy for councillor Coglan to go along.
Well, can I change that motion then? I just thought we needed strong representation, so I'm glad that someone's attending, so good on you councillor Coglan. I'd like to, can I just change it now?
Yep.
I'd like to change that recommendation that council is represented at the Local Government Association Queensland Civic Leaders Summit to be held in Twin Waters from 29th to the 30th of June 2022 by councillor Kim Coglan.
Thank you, can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Did you want to speak or you've sort of already have spoken?
I sort of already.
Okay, all those in favour, and that's carried. Item 10.2, Developing Northern Australia Conference on the 6th to 8th of July 2022. Would someone like to move the recommendation?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council is represented at the Developing Northern Australia Conference to be held in Mackay from 6th to 8th of July 2022 by someone who's interested in going.
Councillor George Fortune, were you interested in that one?
On that day, I've got family commitments, I'd love to go, but there's already plans for a family visit.
No one's interested?
Look, thank you, I.
If we want representation, I can go, but otherwise, if we don't need it.
Yeah, sorry, I was just going to say I'm heavily committed through that week and the week after, and both at work here and council and other things, so I can't make myself available, I'm sorry.
Through the chair, could we hold that open? Do we have to book accommodation and things like that pretty soon for that?
Through you, Madam Mayor, the big issue is the registration, and we often miss the early bird opportunities. Also, the accommodation at the same time. But if no councillors can make it, and keep in mind, there are a lot of conferences being held this year because they're still coming back from Covid, so the conference calendar is pretty full. So if someone misses out, that's okay, and there are enough, there will be a present there from the Mining Cities Alliance, and I'm sure they'll be able to give us feedback on some of the issues there.
Yeah, that'll certainly be in attendance.
I think it's important that council does have representation, I thank council for the nomination. I do have pre-planned family initiatives to take care of there.
Through the chair, could I, sorry, have you finished?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, councillor.
Through the chair, perhaps I could suggest that the Economic Development Officer might be interested in going. I see this is really relevant to his portfolio.
Through you, Madam Mayor, I can talk to staff through Chilera and see where they're up to at the moment.
Yeah, and I have a memorial at the same time as that, so I just, I'm really out for, I can't do that one at all.
Look, can I just say that the conference is, I've been to several, that it is a very valuable conference, and I think it's important that council does stay abreast of what's happening with the Northern Australia development. And it's pertinent to us because we're a key regional city in that part of Australia. So I really think it is something, and I'm really disappointed that I can't make it, but that's the nature of it, yeah, thanks.
Thank you deputy mayor.
I'd like to move a motion.
Yes, please councillor Fortune.
Can I recommend that council is represented at the Developing Northern Australia Conference to be held in Mackay from the 6th to 8th of July 2022 by a council representative nominated by the CEO.
And I'll second that.
Okay, thank you councillor Fortune, councillor McCray. Does it have to, or could we leave it open?
Sorry, through you, Madam Mayor, deputy, did you actually, you had a motion then, didn't you, at the beginning?
My view was that the Economic Development Manager should.
I agree. Through you, Madam Mayor, when you introduced it into the chamber though, you.
I think leave it open because if he does say no, then we're still stuck again, you know, whereas, and he may.
But that's not the issue, I think we have to vote.
Yeah, it's just a process. I'm going to make the other way, sorry about that. And unless I'm mistaken, I thought you introduced it.
Yeah, I did introduce it, but there was no.
Potentially withdraw it?
Yeah, there's no second, so I'll withdraw, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so that's due to the lack of a second. And so now, alternate motion is being put up by councillor Fortune?
Yep, and I'd just like to say, I think that's a great idea because it is in the middle of smack bang in the middle of school holidays, so there might be people who already got plans. So all those in favour, and that's carried.
Yeah, I seconded it, thanks Ash.
Then we go to the item 10.3, which is the Local Government. Then we go to the um item ten point three, which is the local government consultant terms of reference. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move, madam mayor, the council approved the local government consultant terms of reference as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Stratton.
Thank you councillor Stratton. Um, deputy mayor, any comments on this one?
Uh, thanks, madam mayor. Yeah, look, I think uh this um, this particular item is um, will be good for council. It's uh, it's a consult to evaluate and provide recommendations to mayor councillors and the executive management team. And focus on improvement strategies to ensure statutory and best package responsibilities are met. Um, and uh, look forward to this going ahead, thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor. If there's no more co- comments, all those in favour? And that's carried.
Can I, 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 I just please note that I'm, I'm against that motion, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, can we just be clear? Are you having that recorded in the minutes?
Yes, please.
Or is that a division?
No.
In the minutes, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so that now um takes us to the item eleven point one, which is the twenty two, twenty three annual report. Now councillors, can I just ask you to go to page eighty and eighty one? Eighty and eighty one, so.
Sorry, madam mayor, we, is this on the computer, eighty one, or where is it?
Yeah, page eighty. Yeah, the rec, the options are outlined there without the uh.
Yes, if, if we, sorry, it's actually. Yep, so if you go to page eighty.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, you got that. Okay. Okay, well, good morning, everyone. After two years of um unsurpassed challenges and difficulties, the Mount Isa community and indeed the rest of Australia is slowly getting back onto its feet. And it's now on the road to recovery. Mount Isa City Council has responded to Covid nineteen, um, the Covid nineteen pandemic by having a zero overall rate increase in twenty twenty one. And a three point seven five increase in twenty one, twenty two. These steps were to assist the community to navigate through one of the most difficult periods it has ever faced. Without having a long-term negative effect on council's future budgets and council's ability to deliver necessary services, projects and works to the community. It's important that council stands financially strong, makes Mount Isa more livable for all residents while continuing sustainable development. As councillors, it's our responsibility to set the council's vision, direction and budget. It's the mayor and councillors who are responsible for the financial administration of the council. As councillors, we've all had the opportunity to have our say on the budget as the community has elected us to do so. While there were aspects of the budget I would have liked to have seen changed or restrained, there is no doubt that this is a responsible budget with a lot of exciting projects. I have directed the CEO to maximise his efforts in seeking external funding from state and federal government to cover key projects. Explore new and innovative ways of reducing costs in service delivery. And I will continue to ensure that decisions made at council are responsible, transparent and in the interest of residents. As councillors, we've all, we've had our differences and that's what democracy is all about. Now it's time for councillors to work together as a team to ensure communities' best interests are catered for. In the twenty twenty two, twenty three draft budget, council is proposing to put forward a six percent uh general rates increase. Council is also proposing. Sorry, I just jumped over. Council is also proposing a three percent increase in water charges and a six percent increase in both sewer and waste charges. The rate rise of six percent is one of the most difficult and regrettable decisions this council has had to make. For the twenty twenty two, twenty three financial year, council is expected to have an operating revenue of sixty nine million. And an operating expenditure of seventeen point eight three million. Council has allocated thirty four point three seven five million towards capital works. And fifty million funded by grant revenue from the state government or the federal government. And around thirty million of the capex carried over from this year's budget, which is twenty one, twenty two. Of the total capital works budget amount, there is a six point six million on roads and drainage. Six point four seven five million on buildings and other structures. Four point six million on water and sewerage and three point five million on plant and equipment. And we have carryover projects, eight point nine million on the materials recovery facility. Two point three million on the family fun precinct upgrade and two million on smart water meters. In, in Kamewell, Kamewell, uh, council will spend two hundred thousand on roads, drainage and parks. Two hundred thousand on sewage and water and two hundred and fifty thousand for internal renovations to the Kamewell Town Hall. It's important to point out that Mount Isa City Council is recognised as one of the most, one of the more financial stable councils in Queensland. As indicated in recent report from the Queensland Government Audit Office. I would like to thank the council staff who have worked hard to put together this budget over the past few months. While I won't be voting for a six percent rate increase, it's important to note that once adopted as mayor of Mount Isa and leader of the city. I will stand by the decision of the majority of Mount Isa's elected councillors and this is how democracy works. Would any councillors like to move the motion to formally move that the twenty twenty two, twenty three Mount Isa City Council budget be adopted?
I'll move, madam mayor.
Thank you, deputy mayor.
I'll move that council adopts the two thousand and twenty two slash twenty three revenue statement in accordance with sections one, six, nine, two B. And one seventy two of the local government regulation two thousand and twelve as presented. And the council adopts the differential rating categories to apply in two thousand and twenty two, twenty three. To land within the Mount Isa City Council local government area in accordance with sections eighty one, one and eighty one, two of the local government regulation. Two thousand and twelve as presented below. And the council adopts the following rating categories, cents in a dollar and minimum general rates for two thousand and twenty two slash twenty three financial year. And the council adopts the following utility charges for two thousand and twenty two slash twenty three financial year. And the council adopts a separate charge for the two thousand and twenty two, twenty three financial year on all assessments. This will be described as an environmental charge. The amount of the environmental charge will be sixty five dollars per annum per assessment in accordance with section one oh three of the local government regulation. Two thousand and twelve and section forty one, one, three of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine. And the council adopts that, that interest is payable on overdue rates and charges from the day the rates and charges become overdue. And will be calculated at eight point one seven percent per annum on daily balances. As a compound interest in accordance with section one, three, three of the local government regulation two thousand and twelve. And the council adopts the total value of the change expressed as a percentage in the rates and utility charges levied for the financial year. Compared with the rates and utility charges levied in the previous budget in accordance with sections one, six, nine of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine. For the financial year two thousand and twenty two slash twenty three, the change is six percent. And the council adopts the two thousand and twenty two slash twenty three statutory budget documents comprising the statement of income and expenditure. Statement of changes in financial position, statement of cash flows, statement of changes in equity. And relevant measures of financial sustainability in accordance with the section one, six, nine of the Local Government Regulation two thousand and twelve. And that council adopts the two thousand and twenty three, two thousand and thirty one long-term financial forecast in accordance with section. One, six, nine of the Local Government Regulation Counts, Council two thousand and twelve. And the council receives and accepts the two thousand and twenty one, twenty two significant business activities. In accordance with sections eighteen, nineteen, twenty and one, six, nine of the Local Government Regulation two thousand and twelve. And the council adopts to not apply the code of competitive conduct for its business type activities for two thousand and twenty two, twenty three. In accordance with section thirty nine of the Local Government Regulation two thousand and twelve and section forty seven of the Local Government Act. Given the level of expenditure in business activities and the little or no competition for the services provision. Council sees no public benefit in implying the code of competitive conduct at this time. And the council receives and accepts the two thousand and twenty one, twenty two estimated activity statement in accordance with section thirty four of the Local Government Regulation two thousand and twelve.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Can I get a second?
Seconded, Coghlan.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. If there's no more comments on this?
No, madam mayor, I thought you covered um the budget quite well in your presentation, so I'm happy to move forward.
Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. This now takes us to the um item eleven point two, which is twenty twenty one, twenty two estimated financial position. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Uh, yeah, I'll move, madam mayor, the council receives and accepts the two thousand and twenty one, twenty two statements of estimated financial position.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Stratton.
Thank you councillor Stratton. Uh, deputy mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Thank you, madam mayor. Um, this is the um, um, the forecast. It's um, uh, it's showing a total revenue is um, is up now from the original budget by six million. Um, and that's due to the many grants that um we've had a fairly good strike rate with. Um, and it's similar with capital grants as well. Um, the um, other income is well down, but that's um largely because of um. Uh, we're waiting for things such as the water dividend to come through, so um. Um, I, I think I'll hand that to the floor, thanks.
Any other comments on this one? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. And this is um item eleven point four, which is the external audit plan uh for financial year twenty one, twenty two. Would someone like to move the officer's?
Madam mayor, eleven. Eleven point.
Oh, sorry, did I miss one? Tried to jump one. Okay, eleven point three, which is the proposed twenty two, twenty three fees and charges. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Through the chair, I'll move the recommendation that council adopts the twenty twenty two slash twenty three register of commercial fees and charges as presented. And that council adopts the twenty twenty two, twenty three register of uh cost of recovery fees register as presented.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second, Barwick.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Councillor Fortune, any comments on this one?
Just get the overview there through the chair. Um, in accordance with the requirements of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, the proposed two, twenty two slash twenty three commercial fees and charges. Register uh for and uh twenty twenty two slash twenty three cost recovery fees register are to be reviewed and adopted. Uh, there's been a four percent increase uh implied to uh commercial fees and charges. And cost recovery fees and charges proposed for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three financial year.
Thank you councillor Fortune. No other comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. Um, item eleven point five, which is the twenty two, twenty three procurement policy and financial delegations register. Did I, oh, I'm jumping, I'm jumping everywhere. Okay, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move, madam mayor, thanks. Um, the council receives and accepts the Mount Isa City Council External Audit Plan for the year ended thirtieth of June two thousand and twenty two as presented. And the council receives and accepts the Mount Isa City Council owned enterprises proprietary limited trading as Mount Isa entertainment and tourism venues. External audit plan for the year ended thirtieth of June two thousand and twenty two as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Deputy mayor, any comments?
Uh, thanks, madam mayor. So uh, they've outlined there the um, uh, the focus areas for the external audit. Um, and and high on the list there is evaluation of assets, um, the expenditure across major contracts and projects. They are looking at probity and proprietary considerations specifically and also our financial sustainability uh going forward. Um, an interesting one there, the provision for tip restoration because of the, the nature of um how we have to outlay funds every year to rehabilitate the tip at the end of its life. Um, and so there's a certain amount of money goes out there every year for that. Um, they're also looking at information technology in general controls and revenue recognition for grants. Um, thanks, madam mayor. So it's pretty in-depth and it's um, it'll be quite um, a solid, a solid effort, thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, I haven't jumped one this time, eleven point five, which is the twenty two, twenty three procurement policy and financial delegations register. Would someone like to move that motion? Our recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move, madam mayor, that council adopts the two thousand and twenty two slash twenty three procurement policy version twelve. With financial delegations register attachment one and version five as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Stratton.
Thank you councillor Stratton. Um, deputy mayor, would you like to speak on?
Uh, thanks, madam mayor. So this is a revision of a policy that we need to do for procurement through the council. Um, the policy is, is largely the same as last um, last time it was revised. And uh, I think the changes are largely cosmetic in terms of dates and uh some grammar. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so. No more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. Item eleven point six, which is twenty two, twenty three local preference purchasing policy. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
McCray. Um, I'd like to move that council adopts the twenty twenty two, twenty three local preference purchasing policy version two as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Councillor McCray, any comments on this one?
Um, no, just that the local per, um, preference purchasing policy further enhances council's commitment to supporting local business. And makes clear and transparent the level of local preference to be applied to locals.
Thank you councillor McCray. If there's no other comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us to item eleven point seven, which is competitive neutrality complaint management policy. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
McCray. Um, I'd like to move that council adopts the competitive neutrality complaint management policy version one as presented.
Thank you councillor McCray. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second, Barwick.
Thank you councillor Barwick. Councillor McCray, would you like to comment on this one?
Um, no, just background, the competitive neutrality, neutrality complaint management policy has been developed to meet council's obligations under section forty eight. Of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine.
Thank you. If there's no more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. Um, that takes us to eight, uh, item eleven point eight, which is um non-current asset accounting policy for adoption. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move, madam mayor, that the draft non-current, um, sorry, the council adopts a non-current asset accounting policy version two as presented.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Um, can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Any comments on this one, deputy?
Yeah, thanks, madam mayor. This is uh, something that needs to be re- reviewed and re, and new versions put out. But I'll just point out that um, uh, during the external audit in recent times, the um, they found that uh. There was some anomalies with the uh, the level of the uh value of, of um assets that were, were taken up into the financial statements. Um, so they picked that up and um we're addressing that with the changes in this policy so that it um flows through into the financial system and the asset management plan. Um, so it's a, it's a, it's a good example of the audit, external audit working very well. Um. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. It takes us to item eleven point nine, which is the facilities and land asset management plan for adoption. Would someone like to move the uh officer's recommendation?
I'll move uh the recommendation that council adopts the asset management plan for facilities and land as presented. And that council integrates the adopted asset management plan for facilities and land into the long-term financial plan and annual budget reviews.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Councillor Coghlan, any comments on this one?
No, thanks, madam mayor.
Is right, any comments?
No, I just threw through the chair, madam mayor. I think it, it hasn't been updated since two thousand and eleven, so I think we're probably well overdue for it, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you councillor Tully.
I'll just um acknowledge the work of the um, the CEO and the management team in, in moving this asset management plan forward, um, madam mayor.
Thank you, deputy mayor, and.
Pardon?
Through you, deputy mayor, the acknowledgement probably needs to go to the.
Thanks Geraldine, well done.
I did mention this, Dave, I just wanted to highlight anyone's names, but Gerry quite well done and um Chilera. Um, look, uh, yeah, it's an important thing.
And Chilera, yes.
Yeah, it's an important thing that um council needs to do and we, we have been trying to push this along. Through our internal audit committee and a number of other um processes and um it, it's really, really good to see this getting to the level that it is. Yeah, Paul Marks, thank you very much.
Thanks very much for your effort for finance and Gerry as well, Chalaya and Gerry. Okay, all those in favour, and that's carried. Now, this takes us to item eleven point ten. I believe there's a few people with conflicts of interest, but this is the concession to waiver and write-off rates and charges and reserve, on reserve lease trustee permit fees for thirty-six identified nonprofit sporting clubs and community organisations as identified in council's revenue statement for the twenty-two, twenty-three and the twenty-three, twenty-four financial period.
I'll be leaving the room now, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Coghlan. Okay.
I'm happy to move.
Would someone like to move the recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move, madam mayor. Recommendation, option one, that council approves and grants a concession to waiver and write-off rates and charges and reserve lease trustee permit fees excluding water consumption charges and the state fire services levy for thirty-six identified nonprofit sporting clubs and community organisations as defined in council's revenue statement for the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three and the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four financial period under sections one-one-nine, one-twenty-one C D, one-twenty-one A and one-twenty-two, one A of the Local Government Regulation two thousand and twelve due to financial hardship as long as the group is currently active and registered as a nonprofit sports club and or community organisation. And that council further approves and grants a concession to waiver and write-off any current and or outstanding rates, charges, reserve lease and trustee permit fees and water consumption charges issued and or to be issued for the remainder of the financial year ending thirtieth of June two thousand and twenty-two for the thirty-six identified nonprofit sporting clubs and community organisations under sections one-one-nine, one-twenty-one C D, one-twenty-one A and one-twenty-two, one A of the Local Government Regulation two thousand and twelve due to financial hardship as long as the group is currently active and registered as a nonprofit sports club and or community organisation.
Thank you, deputy mayor, can I get a second for that motion?
Stratten.
Okay. It's a rice for that one.
Through the chair, madam mayor, this is something that has been on the agenda for a lot of years. And I've been pushing for a lot of years for this type thing to help the sporting groups and nonprofit groups out. I think this will go a long way to relieving some of the pressures that our sporting and nonprofit groups have in our city. And I think it'd be well appreciated.
Thank you, councillor Stratten. Anyone?
Yeah, thanks, madam mayor. Yeah, I concur with councillor Stratten. I think, you know, they're a very intrinsic part of the fabric of the community. They provide, you know, entertainment, recreation and a whole bunch of other things for, for the community and for many, many people in the community. They are struggling, they've had a difficult time, as you've indicated earlier, through the COVID years. And we, we as a council need to show our support, you know, behind these clubs because of the nature of them and their voluntary workforce. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor. And I concur, there's no doubt that COVID has not only hit our sporting clubs, but it's also impacted on the volunteers that these sporting clubs were very reliant on. And as has been stated today already, you know, Mount Isa, when you talk about Mount Isa, it's not just mining or rodeo. We're a sporting community as well, as well as being multicultural. So I think this two-year assistance that council is going to provide will hopefully, will hopefully help rebuild every sporting club in Mount Isa. And I'm hoping that this is something that will lead to Mount Isa having participants in the Olympic Games in twenty-twenty, twenty-thirty and twenty-thirty-two. All those in favour? Oh, sorry, wait, wait, councillor McCray?
I'd just like to make the observation that this isn't only about helping the sporting groups and community groups stay strong, get people healthy, help with mental health, et cetera. It also has a lot to do with our events, because if we don't have healthy sporting groups and clubs that are looking to fundraise, we actually aren't able to have a lot of events because they're the people that, you know, do the food and the drinks and all of those things as well. So it's really important that these clubs are offered assistance and stay viable.
Thank you, good point, councillor McCray. Any other comments before we vote on this? No, all those in favour, and that's carried. Can we bring in those who are outside? And councillor McCray, you might have a conflict on the Mount Isa Mines rodeo sponsorship.
I'm giving you the nod, Pete.
Oh, is that what you were doing? Okay, so that brings us to eleven point eleven, which is the Mount Isa Mines rodeo twenty-twenty-two proposal for sponsorship. Would anyone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move, madam mayor, that council approves sponsorship to Isa Rodeo Limited in the amount of sixty thousand dollars cash plus GST to be a presenting partner of the two thousand and twenty-two Isa Rodeo at Buchanan Park. And that council authorises the CEO to approve in-kind support as required to assist with successful delivery of the two thousand and twenty-two Mount Isa Mines rodeo subjective budget and resource availability.
Thank you, deputy mayor, can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Madam mayor, it's incumbent on the council, I think, to provide sponsorship annually for our biggest signature event of the year, which attracts, you know, huge numbers of people to the town and generates its own level of economic development. So I support the recommendation.
Thank you, any other comments on this one?
I'll just carry on the overview through the chair. The Mount Isa rodeo has been hosted annually since nineteen fifty-nine, originally run by the combined rotary clubs of Mount Isa. It is now a world-class event, attracting over four hundred and fifty competitors and generating significant tourism and economic benefits to the city.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Is there anyone, anyone else would like to comment on this one before we vote?
Through the chair, madam mayor, I won't be voting for it because I think the rate payers of Mount Isa put all their money into the Buchanan Park complex. And that's, that's our world-class stadium here in Mount Isa. I don't, I don't think, you know, the rate payers of Mount Isa should, should be putting up any more cash.
Thank you. Any other comments before we vote?
Through the chair, I agree with councillor Stratten and I won't be supporting this motion.
Through you, madam mayor, can I just, if I may, are you foreshadowing an alternative motion should the motion put up by the deputy mayor not go through?
No.
We probably need to wait until that motion gets defeated or.
Yeah, that's why I was doing the foreshadowing, sometimes it's easy to do it that way. Would you be foreshadowing an alternative amount?
No.
No.
Okay. Well, let's go to the vote, all, all those in favour. So that's.
Mayor has cast in vote.
Yep, so that's carried.
Can I have my vote recorded, please?
And councillor Stratten, would you like yours recorded? And councillor Tully. Okay, so that takes us to item eleven point twelve, which is the Mount Isa Indigenous Rodeo Championships for twenty-twenty-two proposal for sponsorship. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move it, madam, to get it off the table. I'm thinking of a lesser amount myself, but I'll move the recommendation that council approves sponsorship to Isa Rodeo Limited in the amount of ten thousand dollars cash plus GST to be a bronze partner of the two thousand and twenty-two Mount Isa Indigenous Rodeo Championships at Buchanan Park.
Thank you, deputy mayor, do I have a second for this motion?
Seconded.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Deputy mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, look, this is an inaugural event. I believe, you know, council is doing a lot to, to support the reconciliation of council within the indigenous community as well as the broader community. And I think we need to be a part of this event. And once again, it is a, I think it will, it will be a very popular event with, with the locals and, and with also the visitors.
Yeah, through the chair, look, there are a lot of indigenous rodeo riders out there participating in the sport. And they participate at the smaller rodeos around Queensland and interstate when they can get to them. But there's an opportunity here to learn and develop on the big stage and possibly break into the radio circuit, which is a lifestyle that a lot of indigenous people aspire to. So a bit of background is that the Isa Rodeo is working in partnership with Mona Aboriginal Corporation to develop and run the Mount Isa Indigenous Rodeo Championships as a standalone event within the Mount Isa Mines rodeo program from twenty-twenty-two. As the deputy mayor said, it's the inaugural event for this. And the new event will connect visitors with the North West region, local culture and people, their stories and culture, as well as the visiting indigenous communities of northern Queensland. I think it's a good initiative that's put up by Isa Rodeo Limited. And as for the inaugural event, I think Mount Isa City Council should support it.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Would anyone else like to comment? Through the chair. Oh, sorry.
Yes, thank you, madam mayor. Yes, through the chair, I won't be supporting this because the, you know, it's going against a, an event that's been in Mount Isa now for, you know, quite a few number of years. The, the mailman, which the Mount Isa Race Club run, which is on the Thursday. It's a TAB meeting, which it's televised, you know, throughout Australia. And then the mailman event is on the Thursday night. So I just, you know, I strongly disagree with this and I won't be supporting it at all. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Councillor Coghlan?
Through the chair, I won't be supporting this motion either, due to the fact that we already have a major event on, in the city on, on that Thursday night. I think the rodeo committee are thinking that everyone's got deep pockets and volunteers and people that give up their time to work at these events. It's very hard at the moment to try and get volunteers to do anything. When you put two, you know, two events on, on the same night, it just, it depletes what we have in our community. By not supporting this, but by no means I don't, I fully support the Mona Aboriginal Corporation and what they are doing. I think they're doing a fantastic job. But just this event, I don't agree with it being on the Thursday night, going against the mailman and also the volunteers in the community. I just don't know where people are going to get them from.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to comment?
Can I just add, madam mayor, look, I understand how you're saying that it pulls the back against the, the mailman. I do believe that there's enough to go around, as I understand that the mailman's fairly well oversubscribed every year. I also think this is a different target group. And I also think it adds to the, the degree of the festivities that we should be encouraging in Mount Isa during the rodeo week. And I think this is one way of expanding it without very little additional cost to council. And I'm sure we'll, we'll be involved at some level. But I, I, I would like to see this happen. I think if there's some serious major implications for the mailman, then we probably need to revisit it. But I'd certainly like to see it go ahead in this period.
I would just like to say that while I, I support the concept exactly like councillor Coghlan and councillor Tully have said, I just don't believe we have to compete with another major event on the calendar. And, and to me, there is enough days for us to find another time slot. And that's the only reason why I'm concerned is that we have a major event with another local organisation. And I believe it's their major event. So I'm, I'm, I'm not, I just don't think it's, it's a good idea to put two competing events on side by side. But anyway, if there's no more comments, I will ask all those in favour. And that the motion has been lost.
Could I have my name recorded, please?
Okay. That takes us to, let's grab councillor McCray back in. Okay, so that takes us to item eleven point thirteen, which is Opera Queensland, and it's a request for sponsorship. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move that council approves the proposed proposal from Opera Queensland and provides sponsorship in the amount of fifteen thousand cash excluding GST to deliver composed in Queensland in Mount Isa and Camerwell in two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you, can I get a second for that motion?
McCray.
Thank you, councillor Coghlan, would you like to speak to this motion?
Yeah, just a bit of an overview on it. Opera Queensland actively contributes to shaping Australia's cultural identity through the development and presentation of outstanding opera productions and award-winning community engagement and education programs providing access to hands-on arts experiences for the communities. Just on a personal note, I know we have got a good music community in Mount Isa. And I know over the last, I think it's about five years, a lot of experience has been lost through teachers leaving of, of a very, very high quality with a lot of experience. So I believe bringing this to Mount Isa, because they are doing workshops in schools, will help the new teachers coming up and also students as well. So I think it's a great idea for, for Mount Isa and I welcome it.
Thank you, councillor Coghlan. Any other comments on this one?
Through the chair, look, it's a, a cultural experience that a lot of western Queensland has done experience. I think it's a great concept to bring into, into Mount Isa and Camerwell. It gives all of the students in town the exposure and the local community exposure to opera in, in, in outback Queensland. And I think it's a great initiative.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. If there's no other comments, all those in favour, and that's carried.
Sorry, through you, madam mayor, I've made a mistake. Could I ask that councillor McCray leave the room again? And that I actually have someone move and second the motion not to sponsor the Indigenous rodeo. The motion was lost, I should have come back and got the alternative motion, I didn't capture that. So I need someone.
Oh, sorry, yep.
I need someone to move that council does not approve any sponsorship to Isa Rodeo Limited for twenty-twenty-two Mount Isa Indigenous.
Would someone like to move that motion?
So moved.
And can I get a second for that motion? And all those in favour?
Sorry, through the chair, can we just make that noted that we're, we're in support of the concept, but not the date? Thank you.
We can provide that feedback, I can't put it in the motion. So I've got councillor Coghlan that moved it.
Yep.
Seconded.
Seconded by councillor Tully. All those in favour? And that's carried.
My apologies.
Just record the.
You're like yours, so deputy mayor would like his reported as informed for it? Anyone else in councillor Fortune?
Yes, I also have my.
So through you, madam mayor, you're voting against the, you're voting against the negative. Yep, double negative, thank you.
Okay. So now I think we're up to the vote for thirteen point.
Eleven.
Eleven point thirteen?
Eleven thirteen, yeah.
Yep, so all those in favour? And that's carried. All right, okay, so eleven point fourteen, which is RADF council initiated project, which is a library oral history project.
Yeah, I'll move, madam mayor, thanks. That council endorses the RADF committee recommendations and support the Mount Isa City Council Library Oral History Project as a council-initiated project.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Deputy mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, thanks, madam mayor. This is a nice little project that we can pretty much do in-house and they're asking RADF to support it with some equipment, video editing, software, on-camera microphone, external hard drive and camera lens and an S D card. And I, I note that it's in, it's in support of our upcoming hundred years anniversary from two thousand and twenty-three. So, and it will be actively. So and it will be actively, you know, collecting history and making a good historical collection and more accessible to showcase the history of Mount Isa. And much of it is orals, which is another attraction to the project. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, anyone else would like to comment?
Yes, just on behalf of the 100 Year Committee, I'd like to say that we really support this project and I hope we get some really great content that we can use next year.
Thank you. Yes, I fully support this as well. And a good editing software package can make all the difference to, you know, hours and hours of footage. Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried.
Okay, that takes us to 11.15, which is the Environmental Grant Programme, which is 2122 Round One. And would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move that, Madam Mayor. Recommendation there is council award the following funds to organisations under Round One of the Environmental Grant Programme, 2122. Rainbow Gateway PTY LTD, Myoma, Enviro Wheel, Community Garden, Sustainable Food Production, Upskilling of Locals and Community Engagement of $5,000. Mount Isa Camp Draft Associated Incorporated, Greener Creations, Mount Isa Camp Draft Beauty, Beauty Firing, The Grounds, Installing irrigation control, erosion along the banks located at the grounds and reducing dust resulting in a reduction of lead exposure, $4,894. Mount Isa Day Nursery and Kindergarten Incorporated, Feeding Minds Bodies and Futures, Food Production and Kitchen Garden Programme, Teaching Tools for Learning About the Environment and Sustainability, $5,000. Happy Valley Community Kindergarten, Sub Pod Vegetable Garden Composter, Create Compost with the Introduction of Composting Worms Straight Into the Garden Big, $1,058. Mount Isa Edmonton Netball Association, Netball Heads, Attacked Lead Environment, Challenges at Wellington Park, Netball Grounds, Waste Minimisation, Lead Exposure Minimisation Through Enhancement of Ground Cover and Community Engagement Lemon Tree Planting, $5,000. Total of $20,952.
Thank you, councillor Streton. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Oh, thank you. And councillor Streton, would you like to speak on behalf of this?
I think this is just the start of this grant. I think it's, the community sort of wasn't on board, they didn't know what to do at the start. But now, you know, they've gotten on board and I think next year we'll have even more groups going for it. And this is where, you know, people want to know where their environmental charge levy goes. This is, some of it's going to them.
Thank you, councillor Streton. Any other comments?
Yeah, through the chair, look, it's a great use of the environmental charge. The, I was a bit worried that we weren't getting the number of applicants to come through. But I agree with councillor Streton that once it becomes more well-known, we will get a lot more community organisations coming forward to take advantage and for the betterment of our environment. There are a lot of noxious plants out now, out and around Mount Isa and in Mount Isa too as well. And having people identify them and, you know, there's a possibility of educational programmes too that will help people identify and not necessarily treat them. But there's other groups that can do that too as well and take advantage of the environmental grant programme. Very good initiative.
Thank you. Through the chair, I'd just like to congratulate the staff on this one. I know we had to leave it open for a little bit longer. But I think the staff did a really good job in going out through the media and promoting it. Just like councillor Fortune and I think councillor Streton both said, a lot of people were unsure how this grant worked, but now they know how it does work. But I think just a congratulations to the staff for doing what they did.
And I'd just like to add that environmental issues are at the forefront of everyone's mind at the moment. So, you know, if there's any community groups out there with a great project, keep your eyes out for future grant opportunities.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to 11.16, which is the Financial Overview Report for May 2022. Would someone like to read the, deputy mayor, would you like to read the recommendation?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. I recommend that council receives and accepts the May 2022 Finance Overview Report as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Deputy Mayor, any comments on this one?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I think we covered a fair bit of it in the forecast earlier. And this is the May figures, which shows us how close we are on track into meeting budget by the end of the financial year. And I think you'll see from the figures that we're going very close at the moment. There is a, I'll just make a note there that one of the income figures are down, but that's because the water dividend didn't actually hit in May, it's hit in early June this month. So it hasn't quite shown up here yet. The, sorry, I'm just coming to the the differences. So the grants and subsidies are way up, which is good to see. We're up, but it does include some money for 75% of the full year, 2223 Finance Assistance Agreement. So we are required to take that up as income in this year and carry that forward to be used. And the, the cost of, I believe it's the public liabilities, subscription, labour, hire, plant maintenance and fuel cost is also difficult. It's, sorry, a big variance. It's showing up at the moment as five million under. However, that may iron out towards the end of the financial year. There's there's a capital chart there and also the financial stability ratios, which are all important in terms of us going forward. So we're still, we're still under in a couple of areas. So we need to continue to work on that so that we can, you know, put ourselves in a really good place at a credit rating. I do note, however, that the operating surplus ratio has kicked up at this time and hopefully that'll be maintained towards the end of the financial year. Moving on to the outstanding rates balance, we're sitting at 9.5 million total for the end of May. And once again, there's that lump in the really overdue rates of 3.955 million. Yeah, just a couple of other notes. The non-residential water consumption for the third quarter period is issued during May, the 16th to the 5th. And that's due to be paid in on the 30th to the 6th. So that's captured in those outstanding rates as well. The, I think there's a forecast there for the loans, the borrowings, yeah, page 478. Our loan balance is down to 19 million. So that's in hand as well. We're paying that down with each passing month. And I'd like to just point out that we haven't borrowed money in the last couple of turns, terms against that. Our total cash is 64.9 million in the bank. And it's a total unrestricted cash of 11.8 million at the moment. So once again, we are quite liquid and holding our own financially. Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us to 11.17, which is the Library Overview Report for April and May for 22. Would someone, councillor McCrae, would you like to move the motion?
Yes, I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the April 2022 and May 2022 Library Overview Report as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yes, I've got a little bit today. As we know, it's only a bi-monthly report and lots is always happening at the library. During the April school holidays, it was full. All the activities, all sessions were booked out and there were waiting lists. They coordinated with the Queensland Art Gallery of Modern Arts and provided workshops that involved activities such as Vietnamese tile design, Bangladeshi puppets, as well as crafts, paper mache and China painting. They were successful in receiving funds from the Queensland State Library, $24,000. This is going towards purchasing an online image database, Recollect Online. So that will work nicely with the Radif funding we were talking about before and will help us get images and, I guess, footage for the 100 Year Celebrations. There's been a robotics workshop, Sydney Writers Festival, Indigenous Language Workshop, and also the library took part in the National Simultaneous Storytime that was held on May the 25th.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us now to item 11.18, which is the Corporate Services Overview Report. And this is for April and May for 2022. Would someone like to, deputy mayor, would you like to move this one?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. The council receives and accepts the April 2022 and May 2022 Corporate Services Overview Report.
Can I get a second?
As presented.
Oh, sorry.
That's all done.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. There's just a significant increase in phone calls and activity from May over April that's showing there. So we're still fielding 1.800 odd phone calls per month. And the eye cases again have jumped. We're fielding just under 500, 472 to be exact, total cases during the period. And most of those calls are, the highest number is through local laws. And then revenue and water and sewage are pretty close behind in terms of the activity we need to do to support the community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. This is the Economic and Community Development Overview Report for April and May for 2022. Councillor McCrae, would you like to move this report?
Yes, I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the April 2022 and May 2022 Economic and Community Development Overview Report.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Streton.
Thank you, councillor Streton. Councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yes, I'd just like to congratulate the staff on putting on Queensland Day and welcoming Babies' Day on the weekend. I wasn't able to attend because I had something, a family thing I had to do out of town. But from everything I heard, the day was really successful. We've got Mount Isa Show coming up, so people will be able to pop along and talk to council people at the show with any concerns or anything they want to find out. Pet Day is coming up on the 9th of July, so planning is well underway for that. And we're all looking forward to the Isa Festival on the 10th of August.
Terrific. Anyone else would like to comment on this?
Yeah, just through this one, we talk about economic and community development. It's really great to see Mount Isa City Council, like, giving out our grants and funding opportunities. But just with community groups, I know everyone's struggling with getting funding and all that. But just a reminder to them that in our state, we're very, very lucky to have a lot of, lot of opportunities to grab funding. And just to remind people that we, all community groups and sporting groups, that we do have a Sport and Rec office in Mount Isa with Kelly Wilson in charge there. They're always available for groups to go in and talk to to see what funding is available. And also on a smaller scale, you have like Suncorp, Commonwealth Bank, Queensland Country Credit Union, all have little grants that they give out, but sometimes they're not so little either, they're quite big amounts. But they always like to support local communities. And also you have your state and federal members that have got office staff there that can actually do the work for you and go in and give you a list of who is, where you can apply for grants and they give you the links and that. And they also supply, they also supply letters of support. So I just would encourage people to, that run community groups and that, to get out there and have a look because we all know how tough it is. But also we've, Glencore is also a big sponsor of community groups in especially our area here in Mount Isa. I think they, I did get some figures, the Community Assistance Programme and Futures Fund contributed 746,290 towards the community in 2021, which is great to see.
That was for the, that was for the north.
That was for everyone, yeah.
Yeah, that's from here to Townsville.
Yep, that's right, yeah. But also over the past decade, they have invested more than 25 million into events, projects and initiatives in our North Queensland communities. So they're another one that if you don't go in and you don't apply, you haven't got a chance. But you always got to remember, there's a lot of cutting, pasting goes on when you apply for the next grant. You do the work to start with and you can just keep going, so.
That's some really good feedback, councillor Coghlan. Thank you for that. Has anyone else got any comments on this before we vote? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And this leads us to 11.20, which is the Splashes Overview Report for May 2022. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? And when I say someone, councillor Coghlan?
That I'd like to recommend that council receives and accepts the May 2022 Splashes Overview Report as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
McCrae.
Thank you, councillor McCrae. And councillor Coghlan, would you like to speak on behalf of this?
Oh, look, everything's in the report there, just probably, you know, it's way, way too cold to be going swimming at the moment. So things are down, but hopefully when the warmer weather comes up, everyone will once again be able to take part in the splashes activities.
And can I just check, is the heater on in the pool?
The heater is on in the pool, but I'm sure it's still too cold because I'm not going anywhere near it.
Thank you. All right, if there's no more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to 11.21, which is Water, Sewage, Asset Management Plan for Adoption. Councillor Tully, is this your one to move?
Yes. I'm sort of cruising a bit ahead of myself there, but.
I know, you only have to juggle around and it jumps 10 pages.
Right, okay, item 11.21. The council adopts the Asset Management Plan for Water and Sewage as presented and that council integrates the adopted asset managed plan for water and sewage into the long-term financial plan and annual budget reviews.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Can I get someone to move that, second that motion?
Second, Streton.
Thank you. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yes, thank you very much. This asset management plan forms a second of the asset classes requiring asset management plans for council adoption. And the remainder incorporates the facilities and land, plant and equipment. The first asset management plan was adopted on the 16th of March 2022 for road stormwater and drainage. And in adopting the asset management plan for water and sewage, it continues to close out the extending external audit issue. And I'd just like to congratulate and thank Geraldine for all the work she has done with Shalaya in completing the asset management. Because, I mean, it's something that the council's been missing for years and, yeah, I commend you both in that work. Thank you.
Thank you, well said. Any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. That brings us now to item 12.1, which is Water and Sewage Overview Report. And I hand back over to councillor Tully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Recommendation is that council receives and accepts the April-May 2022 Water and Sewage Overview Report.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Streton.
Thank you, councillor Streton. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. The smart meters, the contract pursues for the delivery of the smart meters was formally signed on the 7th of April. This was a protracted process largely because the delivery timeframe for the meters couldn't be guaranteed. And I believe we're still having problems with the delivery. I'd just like to, if someone could sort of let us know, maybe the CEO of where we are at with the smart meters, please? Yeah, I couldn't see it.
Sorry, through you, Madam Mayor, the manager and director are both ill at the moment.
Okay.
I understand that we're on progress for what we were agreeing to within the contract for the delivery. And off the top of my head, Ross, do you have any of them down at your depot at the moment? Smart meters at your depot at the moment? No, so we're again waiting on that, but this is part of the, the issues have been discussed before with the chips and everything else.
Yeah, it looks like it's a July delivery, so hopefully soon.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. And then that takes us to Major Projects Overview Report, twelve point two. I'll hand back over to councillor Tully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The recommendation for twelve point two, the major projects overview report, the council receive and accepts the May twenty twenty two major projects overview report as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, just a quick overview, the Glibbly Park pump track was officially opened in May by the Honourable Scott Stewart, Minister of Resources, and the minister was extremely impressed with the project. And I, I will commend those, the people that, who were involved, you know, from the contractors to the Mount Isa City Council staff, um, the people that applied for the fund, it was, it was, it's, it certainly is a, a project that Mount Isa as a whole can be, you know, very proud of. Um, Buchanan Park of Blooson Bock, Skate Park, and the demolition of the existing family fun park has commenced. And the construction of the basketball court at the Lions Parks, which will be starting in June, which is this month, I think, yeah. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Any other comments on this one? Okay, all those in favour, and that's carried. We have no general business, so, um, Mount Isa, uh, sorry, so this ordinary minute, I will adjourn. The time is eleven fifty one AM. I'll adjourn for fifteen minutes and then we will reopen in confidential business. I'd like to thank the members of the public who have come in today for attending and welcoming you back next meeting. Thank you so much.
Can I get someone to move the motion that council considers the following confidential reports in a meeting close to the public in accordance with section 254 J of the Local Government Regulation 2012, 14.1 Gulf Australia, Atback Masters 2023 proposal, 14.2 wastewater market testing, 14.3 Chief Executive Officer performance review, 14.4 youth strategy contract and 14.5 minutes of the Audit and Risk Management Committee meeting held on the 26th of May 2022.
And 14.6.
And 14.6, where is it? Oh, yep. Where is that? And the supplementary agenda, 14.6. Oh, yeah. Sorry, thank you. Which is the family fun park and construction tenders.
It's on the computer as well.
Do I get someone to move that motion?
Moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Tully. Can I get someone to second that motion?
MacRae.
Thank you, Council MacRae. All those in favour? And that's carried.
Council into open council.
Moved.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Thank you councillor Coghlan, all those in favour. And that's carried. That takes us to item 14.1. Would someone like to move the...
I'll move, or Coghlan said. The council of British National Gold Australia of the 2023 Outback Queensland market for a 35,000 plus GST to be averted spirit. They'll prove in time support as required. Subject to budget and review.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully, all those in favour. And that's carried. Item 14.2, Waste Management Market Testing. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, madam mayor, that council award the contract to J.J. Richards Waste under RFT 2022-05 for the provision of curbside collection services for an initial term of nine years with one year extension option.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Can I get a second for that motion?
Streton.
Thank you councillor Streton, all those in favour. And that's carried. That takes us to item 14.3, and I will hand over the chair to the deputy mayor.
Thank you, madam mayor.
Shall I close the door?
That's right.
Okay.
Can we have a mover for that please? Someone to move?
Yeah, I recommend that council endorse the successful appraisal of the chief executive officer's performance from December 2020 to December 2021. That council endorsed the chief executive officer's key performance indicators as presented on the 24th of May 2022, and the six-month self-assessment as presented on the 18th of May 2022. And that then council endorsed a remuneration increase as per the level outlined in the 2020-2021 Local Government National Renomination Survey. And that council accept the variations to the chief executive officer's contract.
A second please.
I think he jumped first, yeah. Councillor Fortune, second. All those in favour? Okay, that's carried, thank you. Ashley, do you want to ask? Thank you.
I don't have a fucking timeframe here, mate.
Didn't have my computer plugged in. Okay, so the 14.3, ah, four, would someone like to make the officer's recommendation, please?
I'd like to move the recommendation. Insolvency and the safety of...
Can I get a second for that motion, please?
Fortune.
Thank you, all those in favour. Thank you. And that takes us to item 14.5. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, madam mayor, that council receives and accepts the unconfirmed audit and risk management committee meeting minutes dated the 26th of May 2022 as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Coghlan.
Thank you councillor Coghlan, all those in favour. And that's carried. And that takes us now to item 14.6, which was the supplementary agenda item, and that's the family fun park for construction tenders. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move the recommendation that council provide delegations to the chief executive officer through all submissions related to the family fun park that are recommended by the evaluation panels. This delegation will only apply to the parameters of this particular project and are granted because of the specific timeframes required by the funding gained from the building region's application. And that council understands that this special delegation may exceed the chief executive officer's normal delegation and reminds the administration that this extended delegation is for this project only and will not apply to any other application.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. Can I get a second for that?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully, all those in favour. And that's carried. Well, that brings us to the conclusion of this council ordinary meeting. The time is now 12:40.